Row call, Wayne Adams.
Yeah.
Joanna Blanchard.
Yes, that'll be needed.
Bill Buell.
Here.
Emily Dwyer.
Here.
Marie Falciani. Dick Rogers.
Here.
Lisa O'Conner. Here. Chris Redding.
Here.
Deanna Trotter.
Here.
(laughing).
I'll take care of it. Um, okay, so we're not going to pledge allegiance. Um, can I receive a motion to accept, um, actually, we're gonna make, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to, um, amend the agenda? We're gonna skip the pledge of allegiance, we do not see a flag here this evening. Um, so I need to make an adjustment to the, amend the agenda. Um, item E, eighth grade civic curriculum is gonna be moved up into the agenda between items A and B this evening. So, um, we need a motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? I need a motion to accept the business finance subcommittee meeting of May 21st, 2019. Someone?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Now, the next item on the agenda is public comment. Um, if anybody does want to speak, yes, if they go to the microphone and introduce themselves in one minute to two to three minutes. The phone's over. Um, I don't see anybody getting up, so I'll move on. Uh, the next item is superintendent's news.
Thank you very much, manager, I appreciate it. I'm gonna get started first. Uh, I'd like to thank the Penn Tucket community for showing up Saturday for graduation. We had 150 students graduate. Um, it was in a new location, which I was unsure about, but it seemed to go just absolutely brilliant. In terms of access, handicap accessibility, space, everything was right there, so it went absolutely, it was excellent. It was a beautiful day. Uh, I'd like to give some shout-outs. Uh, certainly Anna Millard, who was the senior class advisor, Ruth Beaton, the junior class advisor, who did a good job bringing everything together. Uh, Kerry McLennan and David Schumacher, who was the vocals in the bands, just did outstanding job. Of course Jonathan Seymour for helping get organized or anything, but especially to the maintenance crew, uh, who were out there days before setting up, trying to figure out where things went. Uh, that was a big, big difference-maker. Uh, of course, all the faculty and staff that participated, as well as some of you who were there participating, I just wanted to say thank you. And my final thanks is to all three Penn Tucket towns. We gave away, uh, our students received over $130,000 in local scholarships. Uh, and this is a tradition that was started way back in the late, uh, 50s. It was the Shaw family who was heavily involved in this, and I've got this, the Technological School District, um, in with the scholarship foundation, so just a huge thanks to all three towns. Every single one of those scholarships is a memory of a former student, teacher, or family that's, a lot of scholarships that are have, that families still continue, uh, because they care so much about the district, so just a big thanks to the community for that. And of course, we have with us tonight from Bagnell, Dr. Elmer Bagnell. We have some students who are gonna do a presentation, so I'm gonna introduce Ms. Butary, the principal of Bagnell, to talk a little bit, uh, about that.
Thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. So tonight, we're gonna talk about two different programs that were new programs to Bagnell this year. So first, we're gonna start out and talk about our Bagnell PD Service Group, and we're gonna end with our DARE program. So the DARE program was a pilot program last year for kindergarten and first grade. Um, and it went so well, and was so well-received by staff, parents, and students, that we extended that to the fifth grade. So we have some fourth, fifth, and sixth grade students, um, that are gonna present to you tonight and answer any questions we may have about those two programs. I just wanted to thank, uh, two people, uh, in particular, Mary Athefenia, she's one of the paraeducators at the Bagnell School, um, and she ran the whole, um, Bagnell Community Service Group. She gets a very small stipend, but she works like she makes six figures on this program in particular. Uh, it was hugely successful, and we did a lot of great things. And then Detective Josh Indoti is our school resource officer, and he partnered and co-talked the DARE program with our PD teacher, uh, Ms. Gross. So that was a wonderful program too, so we'll start with Jason Santipola to open.
Good evening, um, school committee. So, um, this is the first year running on the, the community service at Bagnell. So it was like all the fourth, fifth, and sixth, um, grade students, there are 30 members. And at the beginning of the year, um, like, we would like, like, suggest things to do, and then we would vote on them. And say like, what causes we would do. So this year, the students wanted to help local families stay warm, and we ran a coat drive. Over 200 coats were collected and donated to the Salvation Army. The students decorated lunch bags for neighbors' table to help brand the holiday for families in need. We continued our efforts for the toy drive, which helped support the Department of Children and Family Services. She's a little tall.
Hello, my name is Kira Dolan. Um, we, together, the community service group ran a lot of projects this year, but our biggest project of the year was making, um, care pa- packages for teens in the foster care system. We chose teens for, in, instead of kids, because we feel that the younger the, the child, the more personal things they get from the community. And a community service member has a close connection to this cause and inspired all the other community, all the other members to really want to make a difference for, for these kids. We ran several fundraisers to support this project. We had a, we sold cookies and carnations for Valentine's Day. We allowed the teachers to wear jeans on days other than Friday for, uh, as long as they brought $1, and ran the school store all through that month. Throughout all these efforts, we raised $2,000 to be used to make up all, uh, our care packages. We also invited the community to, in, donate things that they thought teens might want in their care packages. We were able to make up to 30 bags, giving each teen a nice Nike Duffle, a homemade fleece blanket, personal care items, and gift cards. The care packages were given to the Department of Children and Family Services in Hayville to support local teens. So, um, we also ran a service dog project where we volunteered at a, um, it was a bunch of Great Danes at, in the, um, in Crazy Acre, it's called Crazy Acres. And over school vacation, we volun- volunteered at the service dog project in Ipswich. The group provide, provide secret free services, free service dogs to veterans and people in need. It was a day filled with happy, with helping to clean, play with the dogs, and learn about how to become more involved.
To finish, um, to finish our year, we continued our fundraising for cancer research and to help veterans. We were able to raise $500 and donate that money to Dana, to Dana Farber and the Ju- Jimmy Foundation, um, to help support childhood cancers. We have also raised $200 that will be donated to, donated to a local group that helps veterans in need. This is school helped to raise $5,072 for St. Jude Cancer Research. Thanks to parents, teachers, and students in our community, we were able to help causes that mean a lot to us. We look forward to doing more next year. Do you have any questions?
Great job. Ms. Butary, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Of all the wonderful things that we saw done there, how much is that, how much of that is tested on the MCAS?
Tested on the MCAS?
Yes.
Big goose egg.
Just wanted to make sure.
(laughing). Alright, now we have our DARE students up. They're all in the same case. (laughing). Yes, sir. This is only one slide.
(screaming). That's me!
Hi, I'm Zana Cenewa, and, um, I'm gonna talk about DARE. And DARE is a research-based program that is implemented across the country, as well as in 50-plus other countries, and Bagnell piloted the program last year and can run it in first grade. And then we did it in fifth grade this year. Detective Sendoni and Ms. Gross, who is, Ms. Gross is the PD teacher at our school, and Detective Sendoni is the school resource officer, and we have the class during half of, half of the year during wellness. DARE used to be just, um, kind of safety, and what officers, uh, Detective Sendoni said was, it used to be, this is a drug, don't do it. and Amelia is gonna talk about, uh, five of the things we learned in DARE, so.
Hi, I'm Amelia, and I'm in fifth grade, and I'm gonna be talking about the five things that we've covered during, during DARE. The first thing is self-awareness and management. The second is responsible decision-making, such as should you smoke or not. The third is understanding others, such as showing empathy. And the fourth is communication skills, such as being confident when you're talking. The last is handling responsibilities and challenges. The DARE graduation was last Wednesday at the Bagnell School, and during the DARE classes, there was a challenge to see which child from the two DARE classes could write the best essay. The winners are Anthony Delacano and Madison Breath. They are now going to read their essays to you. I hope you enjoy, thank you.
Hi, I'm Madison Breath, and I'm in fifth grade. I have a question for you. Have you ever felt scared, unsure, or lacking confidence? Well, I have been there, that is why we do the DARE program. DARE stands for define, assess, report, and evaluate. DARE helps you step out of your comfort zone and gives you confidence to use your voice. DARE helps you step out of your comfort zone and gives you confidence to use your voice. DARE helps kids learn about the dangers of DARE, alcohol, smoking, and bullying. In DARE, we learn about telling, saying no if someone is pre-pressuring you to make a bad choice. DARE taught us to tell a grown-up if there's a situation that makes you uncomfortable. We are given words to use to get out of a hard situation, like if they want us to drink. DARE gives us the tools to do the right thing. In DARE, we learn that bullying is a common problem in schools, that teachers and police take very seriously. We are taught that if someone is getting bullied, you should help the kid by sticking up for them with your words. If that does not help, tell a grown-up immediately. Do you know there are five W's for bullying? There are who, what, when, where, and why. A teacher or police would ask the students being bullied these five questions to help him or her. For example, bullying are making fun of their clothes, how they look, how they act, and how they might talk. We hope, we can help kids who are being bullied by spending time with them, getting to know them. Bullying can happen to anyone, and we need to be aware to report in bullying, in bullying, so it does not happen again. DARE teaches you not to drink because it's not healthy and you can get sick. Once you start drinking alcohol, it, it is hard to stop drinking. Alcohol can cause you to make bad choices, and people can get hurt. Friends can pre-pressure you into drinking with them, and if, and it can be hard to say no. DARE teaches you confidence and to stay away from drugs and alcohol. Did you know, did you know that alcohol can slow down your brain? Alcohol can also give you poor memory loss, poor judgment, and slow memory fluxes. There are 75,000 alcohol-related deaths each year in the U.S. By saying no to alcohol, there would be less deaths each year. We learned in DARE that tobacco is horrible for you. Did you know that there are more than 200 nonchemicals in cigarette smoke? People can be addicted to cigarettes because of nicotine and cigarettes. Smoking can cause you guilty smelly breath, colds, and breathing problems. The worst that smoking can do is your body is called lung cancer. Over 400,000 people in our country die each year because of smoking. These are all my reasons why you should never smoke. If one of your friends asks you to try smoking, always say no. If you're too scared to say no, you can say, oh, I have to go, see you later. I really liked the DARE class with my friends at Bagnell. Officer Sendoni made me feel comfortable and encouraged to make me always say no. If someone wanted me to try drugs or alcohol, I wanted to be a positive role model and stop the bullying at the school. I feel strong about using my voice and helping others who did not take the DARE program. It would be great if every, every student could take the program now, and when they get to high school. I know for me, I'm going to be more aware of things and people around me, and help those that may have, maybe have not taken appro- this program. Thanks to the DARE program, I have learned the truth of alcohol, drugs, tobacco, and bullying. I remember what I have been taught, and maybe I can tell others about my experience in DARE program. DARE taught me to be confident and stand up for, uh, myself and others by just saying no. Thank you.
Hi, I am FA Delacano, I am in fifth grade, and, well, in this year in DARE, we have learned about drug prevention, communication, stress, risk, and more. Our teacher, Officer Sendoni, taught us about these things, so when we grow up, we will be better and smarter people. Before DARE, I thought it was some sort of healthy eating class, or something like that. (laughing). Instead, we were showed how to do things such as using the DARE method. Define, assess, respond, and evaluate. Um, the DARE method will help us think about problems and how to solve them. Those were a few things we learned about in DARE. We have demonstrated different problems throughout DARE, and one went something like this. Amelia wanted to go to the park with her best friend Madison, but at the park, a group of older kids wanted to smoke. They asked if the girls, if they wanted to smoke as well. What should the girls do? Um, defining is describing the problem, challenge, or opportunity. This is the first step of the DARE decision-making model. To define it, the girls wanted to go to the park, but older kids were smoking there. Should the girls smoke? Assess. What are your choices? What do you do? This is the second step of the DARE decision-making model. The girls should not smoke, but if they do, would they become popular with the older kids? Respond. Make a choice. Use the facts and information you have gathered. This is the third step of the DARE decision-making model. What the girls should do is say no and walk away from the park and tell the, an adult about the older kids at the park. Evaluate. Review your decision. Did you make a good choice? Yes, the girls did make the right choice, but they could have gotten in trouble, but instead, they were most likely thanked. We also learned about peer pressure in DARE. Peer pressure is when someone your age comes and asks you to do something that could get you into serious trouble. We demonstrated peer pressure in, by splitting up into groups and doing a little skit, demonstrating what peer pressure is. In my group, we said, hey, do you two wanna smoke with us? The other kids went, no. How about we go to the movies or something instead? The smoking said, okay, we can do that, and the kids went to the movies. Some of the best ways to deal with peer pressure is by either changing the subject or making up an excuse to walk away. That is one other thing we learned in DARE. Finally, one of the things we learned about in DARE is drug slash smoking-resistant strategies. One could be avoiding the situation. If you know of places where people, you, often use drugs, stay away from those places. Another thing is strength in numbers. Hang around with the non-users, especially where drug use is expected. We also used the strategy called walking away. I found a cigarette in my mom's purse. You wanna smoke, someone might ask? Instead, say no and walk away. Or you could say no while giving an excuse or reason. Someone might say to you, would you like a beer? Say, no thanks, my parents would ground me for life. Finally, changing the subject, it's the final strategy. I have some cigarettes, do you wanna have one? Instead, say something like, no, let's play ball instead. Those are some other things that we learned about in DARE. Officer Sendoni was a good DARE instructor, and I hope he will continue to teach there. We have learned a lot from, of things in there, and I hope you will have the class next year, in years to come. And I also hope that the DARE program will start in other schools. This concludes my essay about DARE. Thank you. Do any of the school committee members have any questions?
Very well done, thank you.
Very well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, just one more item if I may, manager. So, we have a new, uh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Yes.
Parents and students of you who would like to leave, you can, thank you so much for coming.
We have a little entertainment.
Uh, but we have a new department chair.
Daddy's working late.
And, um, oh. And while they're going out, I just want to thank Grove Police Department, I think that's a wonderful program. DARE, of course, we remember 15, 20 years ago becoming, it wasn't super effective, and some places turned over to grade. They redid the curriculum, made it more focused, with bullying, vaping being a big thing. And Detective Sendoni really did a good job working with the kids, and all the kids that I talked to were very excited about the program. And Ms. Gross, the PD teacher you mentioned as well, was also really key in that. Uh, we have a new social studies chair, uh, for seven to 12, and it's going to be John Siegfried. The only reason we have a new social studies teacher is because Mr. Stevens, sitting right there, who wants no recognition for anything whatsoever, never has, never does, uh, is going to be retiring, and I know that on behalf of the thousands of students, including myself, that he helped mold and teach, and teaches to think critically and look analytically about foreign policy, foreign affairs, politics. Uh, he's been an incredible, uh, asset to our district, and I know that as a Merrimack resident, he'll continue to have his hands somehow involved in Penn Tucket. Uh, he comes from a family that's always supported the school district, going back to his, his father, who I think at some point, what was he, a? Yeah, so it plays a very key, important role, so, uh, I know he doesn't want me to do this at all right now, and that's just too bad, because he used to be the teacher, and now I'm on a slightly, we're more collaborative now than what we used to. Uh, but Mr. Stevens, just on behalf of everyone, thank you, thank you, thank you. I really appreciate it. Can't even tell you the number of good memories there, it was a lot of, a lot of fun, a lot of fun. Um, but that, that is all I have for my news. Oh, sorry, that's our news, yes, we have, Mr. Bolio has definitely has some news.
Okay, so as we touched on, graduation, about 150 seniors graduated on Saturday. The location, like you said, was very good, it was easy to get everyone in and out of there quickly, and like you said, the maintenance team really worked hard. He worked hard as well.
Yes.
Set everything up, um, the speakers, it takes a lot of work. When people realize it's a RLC, and so we all. Um, the underclass awards ceremony was held yesterday in the auditorium. Um, there were a lot of awards given out, um, prestigious awards for underclassmen that were based off academics and community service over the past year. And some track news, Junior Peter Lopata plays seventh at the All-State Heat on Saturday in the Mile. He'll be going to national competition this week. And the middle school play will be taking place on Thursday and Friday at 7:00 PM, and on Saturday at 2:00 and 7:00. That's all that happened.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did I miss it, were you gonna announce the replacement, uh, for the history department?
Oh, yeah, John, John Siegfried is going to be the new department chair of social studies.
Any other questions? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the eighth grade Washington DC field trip. And the packet is a proposal that we need to vote on for the field trip, uh, to take place from May 5th to May 9th, 2020. Uh, this is the field trip the eighth graders take every single year. Will you approve? Second, any questions, comments?
Uh, one of the things that a number of schools do, in fact, I just took this offline just before I came here, is a contract. Uh, I discussed this with the superintendent before, and it takes a lot of pressure off the person in charge. I've, uh, literally taken over 1,000 eighth graders to Washington DC, and fortunately, I've only had to, uh, send home two. Uh, but this contract really, really helps in terms of out-of-school suspensions, multiple in-school detentions, excessive absences, multiple behavior referrals, and other infractions that might be in the handbook. Uh, that would take a lot of pressure off Mr. Parent, who's in charge of this, and, uh, he could give it out in the fall, parents have to sign. And for those kids who do not go, uh, we always put together a package for some, uh, activities around the Boston area, and for parents that decided, uh, they weren't gonna send their kids for those five days, that was fine too. But it seems to me that when you have students that you cannot trust in your own hallway in, in terms of discipline, and kids who are tardy every day, and somehow reward them at the end of the year for poor behavior, that makes no sense to me. Yes, ma'am. Actually, I shouldn't be responding.
I just have a question. Is this a, a, a contract that they sign at the beginning of the year, and if they are in trouble and get in trouble, and they can't go on the trip? Or is it a contract for how they behave on the trip?
No, it's, uh, this is, this is not a, um, trip about entitlement. This is about, if this is given out in the fall, then all of the kids and all the parents know that I- know that I have to be on my best behavior, I need to be passing all of my courses, and I need not be involved with all of the things that I just listed. Uh, and what that does is that motivates students to behave. I still have students that are adults that still talk about the times I took them to D. C. It's a fabulous, fabulous trip. But I think the only thing missing out of this is a contract. I'd like the superintendent to give Mr. Parent, who I know would love this, permission to write up his own, uh, contract.
So, glad you brought that up. Because actually, about a year ago, Mr. Parent and I had this very conversation. Uh, and then when the year began, Mr. Kelly and Mr. Parent and I had this conversation, uh, just laying out, as long as they put up in front to parents what the expectations were, uh, that children might have, might make bad decisions early on, but if they basically earn their trip back, that they could do that. Uh, if it was chronic, that we were not, uh, in a position, I don't think, for all the reasons you mentioned, we were not in a position where we're going to put adults, educators, in a foreign city like Washington, D. C. with students who have been chronically misbehaving. Uh, and I think that he just wanted my support, and I gave it to him, and this year, it was the first year from what he told me, a while that they've been able to utilize that. Uh, I don't know if it's, they, they notified the parents well in advance of this, I think it was back in October or somewhere around there is when the first meetings were. But we just wanted to make sure, we actually checked with our attorneys on that to make sure that was something that could be done. But yeah, I, I don't disagree with you. There are some instances.
There are dozens and dozens and dozens of schools that use these. And it's a great motivator for kids not to get in a fight, to be passing, studying, uh, as opposed to just doing anything and everything you want, and you still get rewarded for bad behavior.
Yep, absolutely.
So is this, that they have in paper now, is it, is it in paper now, or is it just a verbal email obviously communicated to families?
Well, I think they have to do everything on, on paper. I don't remember the specific thing about the discipline piece in paper or the contract. You know, I only had a.
Our girls don't get into trouble, so there you go.
I only had an eighth grader went, I clearly read the papers carefully.
I, I remember signing something, but I don't know what it was or what the.
It's, it's on the ta, it's on the table right from the very beginning with the students. And back in the days when Wayne Sylvester used to run the trip, it was one of the first things that was said. Uh, I was in the assumption that had always been the case, and it shifted away from that for whatever reason, uh, and we're back, moving back towards that.
To, uh, Dean's, uh, comment, I gave mine out at the beginning of the second quarter. So if there were any mess-ups, I was giving the kids a second chance. Uh, so we started at the second quarter, but from then on, uh, the contract was everything.
Wayne?
Uh, I'm true educational one night, and I like the idea of the contract. I used to think it worked pretty well. However, I would like to ask Mr. Conway a question. I know back then, as it is now, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe we have the power to call a child back. Many field trips based on grades of the Massachusetts law, is that still in effect?
I guess I, I wouldn't want to answer incorrectly, but I know schools do, they do that for overnight trips, for those who are not passing, uh, trips, so that they would stay behind and continue to work on, uh, the classes that they were, were not passing, for instance. So I know schools do it.
I myself would prevent people from bad behavior from going on, and I was called like, huh, why walk?
Well, the best way to get around that, because I, I was dealing with the same law. If we did not give the kids that stayed back an opportunity, and we did touring in Boston, then we fulfilled everything. We didn't deny anyone a trip, but in order to get to D. C., you had to uphold this. In order to get to Boston, not so much.
I'm sorry, Dylan.
So I, I think that on the one hand, we have an agenda to approve for the trip, and I think a second part could be to bring this up for discussion in the fall, letting Mr. Parent and administration write up something.
So can I have a motion? Any other discussion? Uh, so can I please have a motion to approve the eighth grade Washington, D. C.?
So moved.
You already have.
Um, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, we had moved down below to eighth grade civic curriculum.
Sure. Well, thank you, everyone. Um, we have the next couple of things here. So actually, um, not just eighth grade civics, but it'll be the main point of this. Uh, so earlier this year, uh, the long-awaited revisions to the Massachusetts History and Social Studies frameworks were finally released. I think they were originally from two thousand and three, if I'm correct. Uh, so that is, that's quite some time before revisions. And, and those of you who may have previously worked in, in the history departments, trying to get teachers of history to agree on what should be taught, as history is, is a task in unto itself. But, uh, we, fortunately, we, we had Mr. Stevens with us this year. Um, otherwise, I, I, we would have been doing a lot of, a lot of additional work. So Mr. Stevens took on a lot of this, supporting his staff, and I think he, he has led his staff quite well, because they're a, an independent group who works collaboratively together. Uh, and he was able to provide them with some leadership with this. So you have some supporting documents, uh, it's about two and a half pages or so, just sort of an overview of, of what we can expect. Next year, uh, the social studies history department would go through a year-long, um, curriculum renewal process. That'll be, it'll be the year of social studies next year. And at the end of the year, we'd have a, we would generate a report for the committee and the, and the school district and superintendent to say, here are the expectations and changes we anticipate making. Uh, we didn't wait until then. We did a lot of work this year, and that document outlines a lot of the work that we did, including sending multiple staff members to inter-district collaborative sessions, uh, which were, were very enlightening and powerful. We have more that's going to happen over the summer, um, to both myself and several members of the staff. On June fourteenth, we'll be at Harvard Law School for the Social Science Professional Learning Institute. So we're looking forward to that, and I think we have folks going to the Edward Kennedy Center for the Civics Literacy Conference as well. So we have a lot more of professional development that we're investing in. We have changes that we can anticipate in twenty twenty-one. We'll have some changes definitely in fifth and sixth grade, potentially seventh. We're also going to have to make some recommendations as far as changes to the high school sequence. We talk about, uh, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth grade. Uh, some of those changes might be proposed to occur in twenty twenty-one. Some of them may be staged in over time, because every change you make here has a ripple effect in the sequences that you, that you make in those classes. We're, we're sort of moving along at a purposeful pace with several other districts. We're sort of waiting till someone makes a decision about a few things to see which way some things are going to go. But I, I think actually over the summer, that'll be very telling for us as far as where things are going to go, particularly at the high school level. In the document you received, it does outline, there's about seven, six or seven bullet points that sort of highlight the noted revisions that we can expect. And there's, you know, the, the main thing that, that people have drawn upon is the emphasis on civics at all grade levels, but specifically an entire year-long course at grade eight. And that is something we decided not to wait on. We knew the grade eight course was the component that needed to be done. So we started that work this year, we'll finish it over the summer. But I did want to give, uh, Mr. Kalasian, who's one of our, uh, middle school social studies teachers, and Mr. Stevens, an opportunity to sort of talk a little bit about the expectations for grade eight next year. And then as we move ahead, as again, we, we have some, some changes. For instance, no longer is geography going to be a standalone class. Geography is something that is embedded in multiple other classes. What does that look like from our elementary curriculum on up to the middle school? There are some things we need to make some decisions about. How classes after U. S. one and U. S. two are taught? Again, decisions that need to be made of what's, what are criteria, what's, uh, what are electives? How does all that work for us? At the same time, giving kids opportunities to take accelerated and advanced classes at the high school in, in the areas of studies inside, uh, history. Uh, a lot on the table, with a lot more to come, for sure, but I wanted to sort of turn it over to Mr. Kalasian to talk a little bit about their work in preparing for eighth grade, um, and Mr. Stevens, both of you together, uh, talk a little bit about what to expect. So I'll turn, put on a slot.
Can Tyler come up? So rather than calling it a straight civics course, which makes a lot of people's eyes roll back in their head and fall asleep, we're calling our course The Pursuit of Happiness. And our hope and goal is to put everything we do through the prism of that particular phrase out of the Declaration of Independence. One, because in terms of the political science, the philosophy, the history, it's all there. But also developmentally with thirteen-year-old and fourteen-year-old who is trying to figure out who they are and what's important to them and what, why should I care? It, it's a perfect marriage of the child, the student, and the content. And perhaps it's my inner nerd coming out that I'm kind of excited about this, in that I really do think it's going to be much easier to hook a kid and keep a kid interested and get them engaged in the content and hopefully, potentially, as an active citizen. And that really is the structure of what the state has handed down to us, in that there is a action project every student has to take on. In that, yeah, I'm sorry about that. Um, so again, the goal is that ideally, we're turning out young people who are kind of interested in what's going on, and why is it important to me, and maybe more than just the typical kid flipping through social media, or like Ben is obviously interested in things or Tyler, but others, you know, will come out of this with some more interest and some more knowledge. Um, the examples we're going to show you here are the second-in-all from Newburyport, who are a few years ahead of us in this process. Um, and it's worth noting that everything you're going to see up here are tri-boards. I don't know that we would necessarily go in that direction. I think we would give kids a lot more flexibility and opportunity to present well in whatever way it seems appropriate to them and is in their wheelhouse. But the idea is, Newburyport went with an I and we. I am part of the society and the culture. The individual is connected, we're not separate. And it starts with some self-exploration of identity, who am I? How do I connect to everybody else? There's obviously a lot of how's our governmental structure work? How does the separation of powers and the legal system? There's a lot of emphasis in the frameworks on the, uh, the promise that the founding fathers gave us, and then how we have subsequently, over a couple hundred years, let more and more people, uh, pursue their happiness to achieve that promise. So the goal is to get every child to, in some way, shape, or form, connect to something outside of these four walls, to recognize that, yeah, you're a kid, but you can make a difference, too. And you can perhaps affect a small amount of change. There might be a lot of change, but to give them the opportunity and maybe push them a little bit outside of their comfort zone to take that on. And depending on the child, it could be some, like the previous slide, some kids in Newburyport went whole hog and did tremendous amount of work on the bike paths in Newburyport. For another child, it might simply be reaching out and connecting to the town select or a school community, as it might be. I think another part of this is that we're going to hopefully be getting the leadership in our communities to come to us, too. So don't be surprised if we're knocking on your door and asking for your participation in, uh, some way, shape, or form to connect with the kids to see how it might work, how it might look. So again, these are, um, some more examples. It's hard to see, but there have to be connections with constitutional issues. So there's the federal overarching issue, but then there's the child as an active citizen, the child identifying who they are. And the issue could be something very locally based, but it could be, as in this case, the Second Amendment. So really disguise it for the child. It's like trying to connect the child to their own passions, their own interests, and the reality of what's going on in our communities, locally, but nationally. Does anyone on the school committee have any questions?
Um, so I'm, I'm excited to see the changes. I'm kind of, um, not happy that my daughters won't get to take part in it, but, um, they'll be excited. There you go. They won't appreciate that. When we were at the school committee conference down at the Cape last fall, a lot of the towns were talking about what was happening, what they were doing, and how they were kind of making these changes. And a lot of them were doing like school-wide type of projects. And I'm kind of torn as to whether I like the individual projects, because I think then it can pull the passion out.
Some of these are individuals, some of them are small groups, some of them are an entire class.
Okay.
There's a lot, I'm sorry, there's a lot of flexibility within that. We've already started discussions with the English department in the eighth grade of, um, interdisciplinary connections we can make as well. So we're at the ground floor with this, and I, kind of, it feels a little overwhelming because it's, there's so many choices, and there's so many opportunities, but that's part of the excitement, too. So I, there will be a lot of connection, I think, beyond just.
So I guess that was like, that was my question, is, is there that flexibility to? I mean, this past year would have been a great example of kids getting involved in the billing project. How does it work? How do we reach out? How do, you know, all that type of stuff, um, that, that is personal to them, hopefully. Um, but there will be that flexibility then within. Okay, thank you.
Sam, you would have scored high on that rubric.
Yes, I was just going to say.
For anybody in the meeting in Merrimack, he saved lives.
Saved lives.
It was getting out of the.
So I also think it sounds very exciting, um, but I haven't had kids who have gone through this before yet. So, um, what, what, like next year's eighth graders, who will be doing this for the first time instead of whatever this year's eighth graders did, are they, is there something that they're going to be, is there going to be a hole, like a gap in their knowledge to the way we sometimes have in elementary, like when we switch athletics curriculum or sci, you know, a science curriculum, and, you know, they skip a year of something?
The way the frameworks are coming to us, everybody should be starting at ground level. I mean, is it possible, there's going to be some references to ancient Athens and ancient Rome in terms of where the founding fathers pulled some ideas? And theoretically, they've certainly had that in the sixth grade. That was a long time ago, and they've forgotten all that probably by June fifteenth. Um, so anything that they are given and taught and immersed in and researching, everybody should be at the same place.
Thank you. Oh, I'll ask another one. So this is something that I've been grappling with for a while, and, and I'm sure it's part of your overall discussion, and I haven't looked at the frameworks, to be honest. But it seems like European civilization in some local schools, probably more the private schools, is something that's either at the high school. I think eighth grade used to get some of that, like you were talking about. But, but I guess like where is that going to fall in the continuum? You know, having a daughter who just finished eighth grade and will do U. S. history, and then there's kind of a lot of electives out there, that I, I don't see that content level necessarily being there for some of the students. I don't, I don't know who to ask about that, like.
I mean, I don't think it's something that was primarily highlighted in the, in the social studies revisions. If it falls anywhere, it's going to kind of be part of a world history view of it. So we understand continents, people, geography, economics, and so forth, but from a real study of European cultures, be it modern European cultures.
Uh, I don't, you know, the, like, I think, I went to a prep school, and we had European history, and then we had U. S., you know, it was very, and maybe education just in general now was much more broad. Um, but, but kind of that world, my daughter's experience is, I don't see a lot of that world history being highlighted at the higher levels.
Yeah, there's definitely, in these frameworks, there's a much stronger influence on civics and U. S. history. There's no question about that. Is there room for European history at the high school level in some form? Yeah, there probably is. What that will look like, I think, are sort of the decisions that we'll have to hash up. Uh, and we'll be, the good thing is, we're, we're part of the C. D. H. M. group. And we'll be, the good thing is we're part of the CDHM group, Curriculum Development, Cross-District History Mapping. And we were stepping, we're getting on the ground floor with it and, you know, no one's doing this work alone. Silly, and I think I talked about this earlier in the year, that we were going to do this work all year, but they have done this work, not just two of them, others as well. John Siegfried and Dan Millard attended as well, and there are hours this summer, hours and days this summer of work that you'll be doing with those districts as well. So the good thing is we'll be having those discussions with other districts too, and I think we'll be sharing resources. Publishers really haven't put out a lot yet, but we think that's, that's coming, right? In the end, what do those resources look like? It's not going to be textbook. They're going to be flexible, digital resources. That's what they're going to be, so I would anticipate.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
I just want to acknowledge Jerry, Leo Perrin, and Daniel Millard, who have really, Kentucky really is ahead of going in. There's over thirty districts at this cross-district mapping, and we are really in the forefront in terms of this eighth-grade civics. I know Newburyport has already started their project, but in terms of the work that's being done out there, and these guys have done a lot of extra work this year, I want to acknowledge that.
Excited and overwhelmed at the same time, all of us, we do. But you are, you are ahead. You are ahead of other districts and we see the work that Newburyport does and we want to go beyond that, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you both, really appreciate it.
Okay, so, this is for discussion. The next item on the agenda is the high school math curriculum.
I'm knocking yours first.
Yeah, I got a permit.
So we can address the high school math curriculum. Last year, the district went through a math curriculum renewal cycle, also went through an ELA curriculum renewal cycle, which is a lot to take on at once. As you can tell by my approach for next year, we're going to do one content area. We're going to do, we're going to do history as well, excuse me, we're going to do global language with it as well, but that's a shorter grade span. That's not eight to twelve. And sort of the, what ended up happening is the high school, the math curriculum renewal cycle went through and it stopped at grade eight. And even at that, it stopped at grade seven and half of grade eight. And it really never addressed what were the areas that needed to be reviewed at the high school. That was something fairly early on in discussions with the folks here, we recognized we had some, we had some problems. Problems because the math frameworks changed five years ago. In particular is the word algebra. And we teach algebra, we teach algebra to third graders. Kids in sixth grade did algebra, kids in seventh grade did algebra. Algebra is taught all the way up. Algebra I is a high school-level math class. And we came to you a few, about two months ago and talked about a change in the advanced class for the eighth graders being a high school model Algebra I class. Along with that, we really have to address the fact that at the high school, the materials we were using were thirty years old at best for Algebra I and geometry. And they, the Algebra I text did not cover what is the new Algebra I frameworks. The geometry did not cover what were the geometry frameworks. And those are the new frameworks that are tested on the MTEST test that the students just took in tenth grade. And we did not have the materials in place. So teachers had to pull from lots of resources to try and put all that together. Makes for an inconsistent academic experience for a lot of kids. We had an opportunity for Pearson and Envision, Pearson to bring in Envision and have the teachers use some of the materials, quasi-pilot, and use some of the materials starting in January. They used them for at least a unit, if not two units, at Algebra I and geometry and also Algebra II. And they liked them, they liked all the, sort of, the opportunities that are in front of them. I think they were a little overwhelmed by all of it as well because it was a lot more. And it's hard to do that in the middle of the year, but I give them credit for recognizing and trying. We'd met with the reps a couple times, they had some professional development from the Pearson folks, and we, we sort of assessed the program and decided that it really, it aligned to everything that we needed it to align to. And at that point, entered into some negotiations with the rep around what we could do. The reality is when we buy curriculum programs now, they are digital resources. We can get text with it, but the text is not what they're selling. They're selling digital resources. So they sell licenses. You can buy licenses from one to six years. You buy them for six, it's less per year. For every hardcover text you purchase, you do get digitalized, six-year digital license with it. So we, the reps were really wanting, wanted this to work for us, they recognized this was a need for us, and they also recognized that, you know, as we move down in the future, we're going to have some other math areas that we may need to work with them as well. So I think we worked out a very good offer of resources from them, where they can provide us online, six-year licenses for two hundred site licenses for both Algebra I and geometry, and about a hundred and twenty hard copied texts of each of those as well. So for students who need the hardcover at home, they'll have enough. In addition, in our purchases of Chromebooks, we'll be able to supply the math department with additional resources so they can use these online resources. As a bonus, he is throwing in, rep threw in the Algebra II online series for a whole year for free, so that we can try that. And if we like it, great. My major concern, instructionally, from a curriculum perspective, is to make sure that we have a consistent Algebra I, geometry curriculum in place so that our students are challenged at the appropriate point, no matter whether they're in CP, off or honors at them. And our resources are just far too inconsistent usually. Math department worked together on this, we've had several meetings and a lot of good discussion around what the expectations are. They're going to need some support until next year, we have some PD that's planned into this as well for them, and we're looking forward to doing this. So this represents a rather significant curriculum change. This was sort of a discussion that we had that we made a significant curriculum change like that, we sync sort of the video. If you're curious and want to see some of the resource materials, I have some of the packets if you want to sort of see what it looks like. I am familiar with Envision, not the Algebra, they call this the AGA, Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II. If you, but I'm familiar with Envision, I used it in my previous district, kindergarten up to eighth grade. Always very pleased with it as a program and the resources that it gives us. It is definitely a modernized curriculum approach, which is really different than what we were used to.
So any other questions? Yes, so the students now, they're going to be logging into Pearson, I assume, and then accessing a digital textbook, is that?
Yep, so they'll be accessing a digital textbook for Algebra I and geometry and Algebra II for next year. And, but we'll have a hundred and twenty hard copies as well. So we have hard copies for students who do not have regular or reliable internet access, whether it's a device or access from home.
So with the, with the online textbooks, do those have links to like additional video instruction?
Yes, yeah, everything's embedded within it. And it's always current, so as things change, they update the digital licenses whereas the hard copy is as, as.
And then do we also, do we have an option to get access to like an online homework?
Yep, so they can do all that, teachers will have opportunities to, there's just so many layers within it that allows teachers to even customize what they assign. Do you use Envision in Manchester?
We don't, we use every math, but the online component is the same, where you can actually like adjust, you can drop questions for different students based on like what their need is. And they, like, they can do online homework and you as a teacher can see what they've done and give them feedback or print it out and score it that way. So there, it's just, it's very.
Yeah, I know, I'm really, I was just curious if we had that, if we purchased that license? Because usually you have to purchase it separately.
It's all part of it. No, it's all part of it. So, and Pearson's is called MathXL, and that's sort of their online homework portal for which assignments get given and you give different kids different assignments too, which is going to be helpful. It's a little bit to manage, so I think there's a learning curve ahead for our teachers more so than the kids.
So then would the teachers be required to use like the online homework resources? Like, could one teacher say, no, I want to assign printed copies of homework? And a different one be utilizing the resources more efficiently?
Yeah, I mean, we're, I think certainly we're going to encourage the teachers to utilize the resources they've been given. The vast majority of them are very enthusiastic about this opportunity. And for those who don't appear enthusiastic, it's just, it's really different than what they're used to.
No, it's very different, yeah.
So, and we're going to provide support for that. We want them to be able to utilize it because the bottom line is this is how, this is how people work. This is how, this is how they'll be assessed. And we need to prepare them. And when they go to college, this is what's done in college. And that's, we want to prepare them for that. Are there those who may at times feel more comfortable with a paper homework assignment? Yeah, we can do that, there's options for that. There's no one-size-fits-all, you know, and some may be very comfortable with the digital platform from the get-go and some may need a little more time and practice and will have various entry points before they're able to use it to its maximum capacity.
Couple of questions. So was this piloted with all of the sections this year or only certain teachers piloted it?
It was given to all of the sections to be able to access and utilize. I think some used, used the resource from a planning perspective, not necessarily the online opportunity for the kids, but some used the resources to see how different it is to teach and plan, using that as a resource, and others had kids using it as well.
Did we get, could we get any feedback from the students to see how it worked for them, what any issues were, things like that?
So the feedback generally was they, they liked it, but there was definitely a shift. There were many students who did not like doing the online homework. And it was, but we, really, when we drilled down with the kids, it was really that they, it was just a change. It was just different. It wasn't that they didn't like the platform, it was just different. They were used to doing it on paper, pencil. And using the text in class as an online resource, we had some limitations too. We didn't have a lot of Chromebook availability for a lot of classes, so they would use it sporadically. So it's, that can be challenging too, to use it on a continuous basis, that becomes your, how you should model.
And then, I guess my question would be, current eighth graders who kind of, have kind of been ahead of all these changes, so there may be holes as they're entering, for example, geometry next year, you know, are there things that may not have been covered because it's not the same level as Algebra I was in eighth grade as ninth grade would be? So essentially, I'm concerned that if students, you know, get to assessments or get to the SATs or get to whatever, that there are holes that have been created that.
Those holes would have been there anyways.
I know, but how do, so I guess my question is, how do we make sure there aren't holes?
And this is, but this is why we're doing this, is to stop those holes. Because we're going to see the math MTEST results in late August for the tenth grade. And I can fairly anticipate they are not going to look as positive as they have in the past because it's a new test, testing the new standards, and we were using curriculum and instructional practices that didn't align to it. So this is to fix those holes, is to stop that from happening. That had been happening. Kids were taking algebra in ninth grade or in eighth grade even, took geometry as freshmen, were in Algebra II sophomores, generally did okay, but had to go back and repeat some concepts. Honestly, just the kids that took Algebra I as a freshman, were in geometry as a sophomore, and they had to go back and use a whole review, a month of review of Algebra I concepts for fear that they really didn't get there. So this, this curriculum allows us to do that more fluidly.
And I think I've said this before as well, when we look at testing, as Conway said, anticipate there's going to be gaps. It's not that the children weren't learning geometry, they were learning geometry, they learned plenty of geometry. It's just what the state is going to assess and the percentage of how much each category is going to assess shifted. So our students might have been, they were learning geometry, just not the same amounts that the state wanted in some areas and they were learning more in different areas. It happens in science all the time, you're constantly trying to figure it out. So with gaps, you think, you hope, or we really anticipate that building blocks would still be there. I hope that the building blocks are still there, so the next level, it's just, it's more aligned and they're, they're going to have to place some catch-up in some of the, some of the strands.
This will no doubt be a more rigorous mathematical experience for our students than what they were used to. But they may not know any better, but they'll be going into this without ever having Algebra I. Sorry.
Months ago, the high school math curriculum chair for his department was here and I asked him, I said, how many times do you meet with your own math? Do you have a regular schedule? How many times do you meet with the middle school math teachers to let them know they're doing a great job in this area, but we're going to need some more help here? And his comment was, we can do better. So I guess what I'm asking, the assistant superintendent and the superintendent, find out if he's doing better. Thank you.
Emily, did you have any hand raised?
I'm fine, thank you.
Bill, you have a deal?
You know, I agree with you, Brent, in the sense that one of the things I would really encourage is teacher training. I think this is going to be key, and I don't know how this will fit in your, in the new calendar, but I will support any type of training, because this, this is a massive undertaking, and the best way to work it is to make sure the teachers are prepared. So, it's not a concern because I'm sure they will be, but we don't want them feeling overly stressed, just going in ill-prepared.
The, if I may, we, there are two, there are mainly like two other possibles if we weren't doing Envision. Neither one of them were tremendously responsive about willing to let us try them out. And I, I knew in order for us to make this shift, our teachers needed to see what was coming, of how big of a change this was going to be for them.
This has gotten very good reviews.
Pearson, I've always liked Pearson's professional development, so we'll be relying on Pearson that in the contract that we would sign with them, we'll sign it tomorrow upon approval tonight, is multiple professional development sessions.
Great. Can I make a motion to approve the high school math curriculum?
Second.
I'm sort of reading my discussion, right? All in favor?
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is high school GPA and classroom adjustments.
And we return, and I think at our last meeting, appreciate the feedback, Mr. Smith, Mr. Seymour, myself worked with Amy Funk and Ms. Kohut, we went back and in particular, we looked at the state college and university's weighting system and felt that it probably just, even though the colleges readjust their weights anyways, we felt it was probably best to try and align that as much as possible. You know, our curve ball again is having that accelerated class in there. So we did make some adjustments, you can see now, you have three, three charts in front of you with the information. You still have our current one there, and then you have the new one that was based on our revisions from our conversations. And then you had the one that was initially presented for your comparison on the 21st of May. So the, the main point of it is, is that an A in an honors class would now be worth 4.5, where previously we were saying it was 4.45. And that similar adjustment occurs throughout. It ends up accelerating and, and I looked, so an A plus in an AP class would be worth 5.3, and that is what it is worth on, in the state system as well for the universities and colleges, so. And then the accelerated classes, that weighting is nestled right between honors and AP, but AP, but evenly distributed between those two. This, minus the fact that it accelerated, matches some of the surrounding districts that have a similar system that matches up to the state system as well. So I think we're glad we had the discussion, we went back and discussed it a little further, and were able to make some revisions.
Any questions, Chris? I guess the only question I still have, I thank you for taking the feedback and kind of thinking about it. So the question I would have is, where the students are in dual enrollment, where would that kind of fall on the GPA schedule?
Yeah, so, and it's not part of a grid necessarily, and that's a conversation that generally speaking, the state considers dual enrollment classes to be accepted as AP level classes. Generally speaking, that is what happens. I think Mr. Seymour has sought the flexibility that sometimes if there's a dual enrollment class that just doesn't seem to meet the same muster, that he would like the ability to not necessarily give it AP credit so long as the, as long as the student knew that prior to taking the class. And I think that's a reasonable thing, because sometimes that is the case. You know, so it doesn't show up in a chart like this, but generally speaking, yes, dual enrollment classes would be considered AP level classes.
So would there be like language that would say dual enrollment would be considered AP level?
Upon approval.
Upon, or based on the discretion of the principal?
Correct, correct, yep.
Or whoever.
Yep.
Any other questions? So not seeing any, can I receive a, can I receive a motion to accept the high school GPA and class rank adjustments?
So.
Second. All in favor?
I don't have any discussion, we didn't before, but put that to the second discussion, if somebody wanted to add to it, now the third motion.
So any discussion?
I do have a question, just a quick one, Nick and I were, what we're going, want to be voting on is the second chart down, opposed 4.03.
Correct.
The one on the right is what we were given to this.
Correct. So it's the second chart with the, sort of the highlighted header, yes.
Going with the June 4th date?
Correct, June 4th date, yep.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Now the next item on the agenda is the elementary-based, I'm sorry, elementary standard-based report cards.
So I'm going to do a quick thing on the slides, real quick. This was not on the list of things that we were going to tackle when Justin and I spent hours over the summer and into September preparing for the school year. But when we made adjustments to Eureka Math and our ELA curriculum, and we met, we had got some release time for our elementary teachers, one grade at a time, for three hours in the fall, and they met with me again, our literacy coaches, and went for the math, it became abundantly clear that we were shifting to a standard-based curriculum that had report cards that were from 1985. And it was simply, it was not fair to the teachers, it was not fair to the students, and it was not fair to parents. We were not able to provide parents and students with an accurate prediction of how their child was doing based on the curriculum of the date. It's not often district leadership will step in and say, the first thing we do is standard-based report cards. I think we ran that up our mentors, I think they'd say crazy for doing that. Our teachers were asking, please, we need this help. So we can go through this quickly, you have examples, I'll explain to you our process for here. They did a tremendous amount of work, and we had full buy-in from all buildings at all grade lines. This was really a lot of work done expediently, but elaborately. So report card revision, standard-based report cards, if I were to just define this for you, standard-based grading is based on the principle that grades are not about what students earn, they are about what students learn. To succeed with standard-based grading, teachers will need to develop teaching and learning strategies, formative assessment strategies, coaching strategies, at least as much as they need to develop the grading points. And at the same time, we are shifting into Infinite Campus. Infinite Campus, as Ben would tell you at the high school, the U-School Loop is where you get your assignments, that's where you see your grades, you see that information. Elementary teachers are not used to that. Infinite Campus will provide them that opportunity. And within it, we take all of the standards we identified, and they get uploaded into Infinite Campus. And for every assignment the teacher is giving a grade on at the elementary schools, they're attaching it to one of these standards. So they're giving a grade or a mark on students' artifacts of work. Again, not what they earn, but what they learn. And I'll give you an example of why. This is mean standards versus using averages. So we have three students here, A, B, and C. Over a five-week span, okay, we have a rubric score, one to five. One demonstrates very little understanding of the skill, five demonstrates stellar outstanding in demonstration of the skill. So if you can see how this works, student A, B, and C, each week, the teacher might put a score in on how student did on a particular standard or skill, based on their observation of their work or assessment of some form, okay? Now, as we go through this, if we were to average these, you'd end up in averages of 80, 72, and 72. But we have three really different students up there, who are demonstrating three really different paths to learning. The student who has an 80 started off knowing everything they needed to know, and didn't demonstrate any further growth over the five weeks span. But yet they have the highest average. Student B started off knowing very little, and made incremental changes, and actually by the end of the five weeks, was demonstrating that their learning is above what student one is. But if you average them, which is how we often give grades now, you get an average of 72. And then student C was a little all over the place. Has demonstrated that they know how to do it, but we don't know if that's really consistent performance. And yet their average is the same as student B. So which student do you want? So we do this activity, did this with the teachers, we also did this at parent, at the parent forum, where we took parent feedback on this. And the skill that's being tied here is parachute, packing a parachute. So which one of those students do you want to pack your parachute? Do you want student A to pack your parachute? Student B, or student C today? Today's the end of the five weeks. Who do you want packing your parachute?
B.
I'll take student B. All right?
I'm concerned about who's flying the plane.
Well, so, but if we do averages, that student doesn't have the highest score. So that's one thing when we use student, standard-based grading, if at the end of the period, student B is going to demonstrate they're, they know what they're doing, okay? And that's an example of how this changes the grading. These are the folks who committed to many, many hours. We met in person 10 times, we met digitally quite a bit. They came to a parent forum, where we had parents give feedback on the report cards, mark report cards, and these folks helped prepare our presentation for the entire staff last, to Friday. All grades represented, specialists, special education, and people from all grade groups, all four grade groups. Our process, we had monthly meetings, representation, as I said, we reviewed over 20 other standard-based report cards, many from Massachusetts, a few from outside of the state. We identified aspects we liked and why, and created a model based on those aspects. What you're viewing is the model. Now, if you don't like some of the formatting, or some of the heading gets cut off, that'll be squared away in Infinite Campus. Infinite Campus will print these. These are literally on Google Docs, but we set them up in the same way Infinite Campus would print them, in a structure. We used the following resources, Mass State Frameworks, we have power standards that were previously identified in Kentucky, the Castle SEL Wheel for Competencies, and that includes the first parts that we see here around work habits and social skill development, and the Infinite Campus template. We made multiple revisions, and we had some discussions, some of the best discussions I have all year with educators were at these meetings. We really, they did not hold back, they got right down. Fantastic conversation. Bob Suvar was not needed at any of the meetings. We let speed dial, but not needed. We have a parent focus group with parents from all three towns who joined us. We established that report cards are only part of a comprehensive school-to-home communication system that must be too wet, and that came from the parent focus group, and the teachers heard that, and it was really valuable, which tells us, I think we need to revisit the conference schedule next year, because now these report cards are communicating a lot of different information, and as next year, I think our conference schedule will remain the same next year, but I think we'll take next year to revisit what that looks like moving ahead, knowing that we now have standard-based report cards. And we are planning for teacher PD at the beginning of the year, we actually did some before the end of the year here, but they'll need some help too. This is a change in grading practice too. And we have planned to parent professional development, and we'll combine Infinite Campus and standard-based report cards with parents. Along with these, we're going to prepare a pamphlet for each grade, that helps give more of a description around what this means. In other words, why can't you just give my kid all these, why I don't understand, and helping parents understand that. So we'll have our little roadshow that we'll do in the fall for all parents to come out and learn how to use it in the campus, but then also how to understand the report card, or where they go from. It's our process. If I were just to highlight a few things for us, so highlights, there are different grading rubrics for social skills and academic areas and the specials. So you can see there are rubrics of either for the social skills, it's consistently, you see here, sometimes rarely, and then for the academics, it's a one, two, three, or four, or in this case, an exceeding, a meeting, a progressing, or a limited progress demonstration. Castle Competencies and Social Skills, this is what we'll teach and assess. Digital literacy standards are embedded as well, that was not previously covered. We did have a lot of discussion around science and social studies, and for the time being, they are not tremendously specific. We knew we had to revise our social study standards, we did not feel we could accurately capture what needed to be taught, and the science was, we know we still have work to do there, we focus mainly on literacy and math. We will report on science. We can imagine in another year or two, as we create and are able to articulate more clearly our K-6, Science and Social Studies curriculum by grade level, that we can provide more specific standards in those two content areas. Standards are not taught during a given term, could be blocked out, or we can give an NA. So particularly in math, if you're not teaching a concept in the first trimester, you don't give a grade. The comments section gives teachers the flexibility to address other areas of concern, not included on the report card. Grading in Infinite Campus will be done using the same rubrics, so they'll be using a one, two, three, or four. Everything in Infinite Campus will be graded as a one, two, three, or four. Either exceeding expectation, meeting, approaching, or not yet done. PD will be offered, parent sessions, Infinite Campus, and parent outreach and communication. And we can revisit small changes over time. So we have to upload literally every word in here, typed into a massive Excel document, and we upload it up into Infinite Campus, so that we can, the teachers can pull them, these are the standards they hold, and they identify, say, the grades. It was a lot of work in a short period of time, but I give, I give the staff, I'm like the team, a lot of credit. We spent a lot of time on it, and I'm surprised actually that we got quite as far as we did, but...
Thank you. Do I add anything? So are the students going to have grades posted immediately like they are at the high school? Is that the thought?
In essence, yes, they will. It won't really run quite the same way, it's, you know, because you're not going to see averages, for instance, but they'll get, be able to get feedback and see feedback on Infinite Campus on assignments or assessments. But that, it'll get entered in as a one, two, three, or four. So they may get a test back, and it may have a more detailed grade, but on Infinite Campus, it'll show up as a one, two, three.
And if you don't have children that have gone through the elementary system, there is no report-out mechanism until you get a project report, or a report card at this point. And when I was going around in the fall, we were hearing back from the elementary teachers, one of their frustrations was that they did not have any mechanism to reach out to parents or to kind of talk about how grading, how grades were going forward for that particular student. So I think for them, this is going to be brand spanking new for the middle school and high school, it's a shift, School Loop to Infinite Campus, so I think elementary might, it'll be, it'll be a bigger learning curve for elementary, because it's the first time they've...
Emily? So you said that the comments is for some, you know, stuff that's not addressed in the other areas. So are teachers going to be expected to write comments for each term? And is some, because this has come up in our school, and I've seen it with my son as well, like where sometimes they're like, you know, see parent conference notes or something like that, and whereas the one teacher might say that, and another teacher might put something in there, and then there's this disparity between what teacher does what, which can be frustrating.
Yeah. So we did, lady, we had a lot of discussion around comments, and we actually, some people asked, could we have numbered comments, like the canned comments? We decided against that. Infinite Campus actually sets it up that you could do comments after every section, you could do comments. And we decided that might have been a little much. So the expectation certainly is that you write something, but I think this whole thing came up with the teachers, it came up with the parents, and, and really, the issue is the timing of the report cards and the conferences. And that if, if the teachers are preparing these report cards, and it's literally either two days before, or two days after the conferences, it's, it seems repetitive, the information, which is why I think moving ahead after this year, I can see in 2021, having a different structure or schedule to our conferences, because this is all part of a parent communication system. So the expectation is yes, that we write and contribute in the conference notes. To what degree, I think we need to, we need to fix the issue with the conferences to be able to lay stronger expectations around what should be included in the notes.
I just think we might head off, or you guys might head off some issues by setting some expectation, whether it's in the fall, you know, in the December, everyone writes, you know, parent conferences, because, or not, but just say one way or the other, because otherwise you're going to get people to have...
My preference is that people do write in the notes, and it doesn't have to be extensive, but you can write something more qualitative that isn't necessarily described by standards.
I just think we need, it needs to come from, to everyone from...
They were, that was discussed and presented to you, so.
Awesome, thank you.
I'm very impressed with this. There is no question that we are on the verge of raising the bar here at Penn Tucket, and I'm very pleased by what I'm seeing. Are we setting aside, if, for the teacher that's very thoughtful, this is going to take an abundance of time, are we having any time, like a shortened day, where teachers can bear down and work, what are we doing for them?
So Infinite Campus will take 90% of the work out of this.
No kidding.
So as they're entering in those grades on those standards, when it comes time for report cards, Infinite Campus will tell the teacher where the kid stands on all of these standards. So it's going to take a lot of the work out of it, because they'll be doing it along the way.
And in my experience, when you do give parents that constant feedback, and they can go and look, and they see grades shifting suddenly, that gives the parent an opportunity to reach out to the teacher to say, hey, can I touch base with you, what's going on? And it helps with that flow of... And it helps with that flow of communication much better than nothing for a long time, when all of a sudden here's, here's a bunch of.
Now, when I see the word text in the kindergarten report card, am I assuming that this is the teacher reading to the students?
Some students do read, you know, but text is just what type of book or material they may be using.
In the social studies section, is there any local history themes regarding Grovelanders, West Newbarians, and Merrimackees?
So in the report card, no, and that's one of the things we decided that we needed to work through the social studies curriculum renewal cycle next year before making anything really specific in the report card. There is room, I think, I want to say, so certainly in grades one and maybe three, there is some room in the, in the standards around local history.
Yeah, I just think it'd be a wonderful opportunity to be throwing out the Kentucky, the statuums, how these communities evolved, and then move forward into the rest of the curriculum.
Mr. Dick Hodge, Groveland legend, we could have that, right?
That, that might be debatable. I have another question. When I see the word concept, particularly with younger children, I try to caution myself, an image develops of someone putting up a window on the second floor of a house that has no first floor or no basement. So I'm just offering a word of caution that when we use the word concept, are we pushing too much too soon? I'm just offering that as a question and as a challenge.
I guess I would, we didn't make up the standards. These came from the Massachusetts state standards. At times, we did sort of combine language and maybe paraphrase, but it is, this is what the state is really expecting of our students at each grade level.
This is impressive stuff. I will, I have some edits that I'll hand the superintendent at the end. I won't over them right now.
No?
Melissa.
I have a question. I have seen report cards like this from other school districts. And sometimes when students are in language-based programming, say like under mathematics, doesn't matter any particular one, but says like, you know, under mathematics, it might be modified, maybe typed in modify, if they're in a language-based program. Are we going to do something like that, or no?
So the, the report card is the, the standards expectation for the grade level that the child is in. Grade level standards, and we measure them based on grade level standards. The curriculum offered can be modified, but we shouldn't be modifying the end standard. That's not our role to do. The state has, has already established what those standards are. We modify the curriculum, and we modify the instructional approach to help, and scaffolds to help the student meet them. So in the end, how the student meets that standard should not, should not have an asterisk.
So essentially, you know, the standards are the same across the board?
Correct.
But some have support, some don't, and that support piece is not going to be noted on.
Yeah, I mean, maybe that's a possibility for the, for the notes area where a child needs some support. You know, and when you really look at the rubric and you talk about exceeding, meeting, or approaching, so a lot of those students may be approaching the standard. Approaching is not a C. This is not an A, B, C. This is not equate to As, Bs, and Cs, and Bs.
I feel like that's where the progress notes come in. And that way, the report card itself doesn't reflect any bias or indication that this student may be having a different delivery or that sort of thing, because they're still students in that regular ed classroom. Yeah, no, I know you do, but it's like, so that's how.
There really should, you're right. There should be nothing on a, on a report card, which is part of a student record, that indicates a child has an IT.
So that's, that's how other districts get around that, from a teacher's perspective?
I just don't see that.
Yeah, no, that's why.
I was hoping that we would do it. Are there any other questions? So can I have a motion to accept the elementary standard-based report?
Melissa.
Second.
The question, discussion, all in favor? The next item on the agenda is the J policies. The rate is currently the chair of the committee. She's not here, so I requested Dick to discuss these.
We can look at these separately, or if you have already read them, we can do all of them at once, but you may have questions individually about, so, ready to, and you also notice, if you see the word "none," that means we borrowed language from another school.
So I have questions on three specific policies, JFBB, JHD, and JIC. So I don't know, people have other questions, and we just want to.
Let's just knock them out.
Okay. All right, so JFBB is the school choice policy, and it seems the way that this policy is written, it's written only for students who were trying to school choice into the district, but we always have to participate both ways, like letting students out, having students in. And so it seems like we don't necessarily have a policy written, there's no statement here that says we're going to participate in school choice to allow our students to go out to other districts. I don't know if we need that, but this whole policy seems to be at, you know, students trying to come into our school district. And it says specifically here that we're supposed to be holding a public hearing, which I don't believe, I mean, we, we address it at business meetings, but I don't think we've ever had a public hearing.
Excuse me, yes, we have, when, when we've had openings, remember one year there were 40 openings? We did do it in a public hearing.
So it's a public hearing, okay.
You only do it if you have openings.
Well, no, it says we have to hold a public hearing to review participation in the school choice program.
We do that at a meeting.
Well, we do that as a school committee.
Right, but do we call it a public hearing?
A school committee meeting is a public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Okay.
Okay, so does anybody want to address the first?
Yeah, do we need, do we need a policy stating, you know, that we're doing it both ways?
So you recall my April comments, it was, we got a little bit confused because we were talking about school choice, students coming in, and then we had to approve our students going out.
Well, just the simple fact that we vote to participate in the school choice program means you follow the state standard, or in other words, if a student wishes to leave, the $5,000 leaves our school district and goes to their school district. And suppose the point becomes if we ever vote not to participate in the school choice program, which we really can't do for another five years anyways for the kids that are currently in the system, that would be something, we have, I guess, five years to take a look at and research. But as I understand it, you always, I don't think you can deny a child to leave under the school choice statute.
I don't think we have that option.
Yeah.
And then right in section A, this is the reason why we're not in school choice, really, is that it says the cost of tuition for non-resident students is borne by the Commonwealth, and I think that's just a little confusing, because they really don't cover the cost of tuition. They give you $5,000.
Up to.
Up to, right.
Could be less.
So I, I feel like that statement there leads people to believe that the Commonwealth does cover the full cost of a student coming to our district if we were to, if we were to ever enter this again. And that's one line that I was thinking may, maybe should be changed, just stay what the state is actually doing.
So you would, you would look at it to say the cost of tuition for non-resident students will be partially.
Will be set by the Commonwealth?
Set amount from the Commonwealth, but may not cover the entire actual cost of education. I'd actually, I'd be very okay with that.
Okay. So those were my only comments on JFBB. So that's a one, one amendment to that one. We have to vote on that one. Do you just want me to go to my next policy?
Yes, you want to rephrase, the cost of tuition for non-resident students will be.
Set.
Set.
Either called most of Massachusetts, according to the law.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
And that's, that's a good comment anyways, because I believe up in there, they're knocking around language up at the State House in the budget section this year about whether the $5,000 is enough that school districts aren't participating because of that. So they're thinking of adjusting it, so maybe just by a blanket statement setting by the Commonwealth will cover any additional changes they may make as well.
I move to amend F, JFBB, school choice. Second.
Should we, should we vote on this one now, or should we vote?
Sure.
Does anybody else have any questions on this one?
Sorry, Mr. Hodge, can you please read to me again exactly?
The cost of tuition for non-resident students will be set by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in accordance with the law. Does that satisfy your concern?
Yeah. I guess we'll go to the number one. Does anybody else have any questions on this one? On this? All in favor?
So I'm just going to go to the next one, maybe we'll do that, some of the things that I keep hopping around. Um, I'm just, yeah, that was the first one, right? Yep. So I'm just going to go to the next one of the packet, and then when we get to the, the JHD and the NAST. So the next policy to vote on is JFBA inter-district choice program.
So way back when, there was two policies. I don't know whether this is a merger of the two, or if somehow this, so initially, we had intra-district special ed programs, and I was the one who actually asked for this policy, because there were families whose child was going over to Paige, but they lived in Groveland, so they really didn't want their kids in different schools and PTOs and activity. So this, so what this initial one was, is to allow students in that case. But I think somehow, then when we started offering intra-district choice for numbers purposes, somehow it got muddied in to here, and I don't know if we want it to be one in the same, if there's another policy that actually covers non-special ed, intra-district, I don't know that. So I guess that's my question, concern.
So JFABE, which is not on the list, that addresses the non-special ed.
Okay. So I think there's some language in here that isn't specific to that intra-district special ed sibling, if you know what I mean.
I do, because we've been carrying it sometimes.
It says the siblings may be operating intra-district choice at the sole discretion of superintendent. And the superintendent will coordinate his decision with the elementary school principals, and will take overall class size as any consideration.
So even, so like the last sentence of that first paragraph, parents with non-special education students that unveil themselves of an intra-district choice will be responsible for providing, so, so that should say more to the effect that parents whose non-special education siblings.
Yes, yes, yeah, yeah, right.
Because.
So I have, I have two children, one's special education, and the one's not. We provide transportation for the one that might require a special education transportation and offer the element.
So how should we amend that sentence?
Well, and even at the bottom, the last bullet is more the intra-district slots. So I guess there should be two separate cases, that I don't want a sibling to be in the lottery for someone who just wants to go to a different school. Like I want special ed siblings to have first priority.
So the way, the way we've been.
And I think this policy has changed through the years, that that's not.
The way we've been addressing it, if, if I had a child who was in a different school for special education, and I have another child, they always take priority over anyone else if there's a seat available.
See, and I don't think this policy.
States that.
States that, yes.
That's how, that's how we operate.
Right, right.
We could put it in there explicitly, and I don't, I have no problem.
So I think this policy needs to kind of be looked at, like I said, I think there's confusion, or there has been confusion if we've made changes.
Do we want to work on that Monday? We have a three-hour session, and move on to the next one?
Okay, we're going to table this one, right?
Do you have a mark down to discuss?
Yes.
And you get what I'm getting, okay.
Okay, so can I have a motion to table policy?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? So the next policy is JHD. I know Joanna, you had a question on this one. JHD, exclusions and exemptions from school attendance.
Yeah, so my question on this is, on the last bullet, it talks about the Massachusetts school entry immunization law, which I looked up, and in that law, what it says is that policies on exclusion from school for students who don't have immunization for religious reasons, it says those policies are developed and enforced at local levels. Sorry, this is more for students who, they come in, they don't have their immunizations, and this, the school district has to have a policy on how we allow them to catch up. So do you just say you can't come in the door, or do you say, you know, you're allowed to be in school, and you have six months to catch up on your immunizations, but we need to have policies? So do we have something in place for that right now, or do we need a new policy developed?
So I would have to check with the nurse to find out, because the nurse typically checks the immunization, immunization records. But overall, the general approach has been you have a finite amount of time to get those immunizations, or to complete the form. You know, in Massachusetts, you do have those options, so they can complete the form that says they've got the immunizations, or they can fill out a reason, reason, religious waiver. As long as we have that form, they're good to go. After that point, then, yes, they're removed from school. I don't think we had any children removed this year.
Yeah, I don't, Massachusetts has two options for parents not immunizing their children. One is a religious reason, and the other is a medical reason, which needs to be documented by a doctor, because this child can't be immunized.
Yeah, so my question is, like, do, should we have a written policy?
About the amount of time, if, and when you, if you come into our district, you have X amount of weeks or a span.
I mean, I think this policy actually says you're not allowed in the door. Because it doesn't state any timeframe, it simply says denial of admission. So if you don't have it, you're not allowed in. So the following shall be grounds for denial of admission to school.
Okay.
Or diversion to appropriate alternative program. They say if you register, you don't have this, say you're not starting. So long as you don't provide proof of or reason that meets Massachusetts state laws.
Okay, and so we are, that's what we're enforcing. Because my, so my question about this is that further in this law, what it says is, if there is any type of an outbreak for a vaccine-preventable disease, a student who is not immunized has to be excluded from school. And then I think the district will be responsible for paying for their education during that time, because that's what it is kind of saying. While that, it's saying, it says however, in the event of a case of vaccine-preventable disease in a school setting, these students would also be subject to exclusion from school due to the lack of document, documentation of immunity. The greater the percentage of the gap, meaning the gap with students who are and aren't immunized, the more significant the potential burden on the schools and the community should those students need to be excluded. So the potential burden kind of implies that you might be, have to bear the cost of educating the students.
So they only use the phrase burden, they don't actually state.
Right, right.
That's DPH way.
I'm just concerned about what that means, given what's going on with outbreaks.
Our school committee lawyer has approved this language, which came from Newbury Court.
I would stay with, with Dick saying with that.
I would not be inclined to pay.
I, I would be hard, well, I take that back.
Unless we have directed.
As soon as I get you brought to an address. But you know, something like this did occur in New York where numerous students were excluded from school.
Right.
And it was, but it's not the, it wasn't the school district's choice to exclude them. It was the state of Massachusetts stating these children cannot come to school.
Right, but are you still responsible for providing an education for a student who isn't in the school system?
When the state tells us they can't be?
And so I just want to make sure we have policies in place that's very clear. So it's either they don't come to school at all without their immunizations or if we're allowing them to start, immunizations have to be
So what you're looking for ultimately is a bullet there that says if a child is excluded because they fail, they have not provided proper documentation or because of vaccine-related illnesses, that the school is or is not responsible for that.
I'm not sure that we can say that.
I, I would say we would have
No, I just want to make sure that either students aren't allowed to start without their vaccinations unless they have, you know, the medical exemption, the religious exemption. Or if they are, if we are letting them start, we make sure that they have to have their vaccinations within six months.
You have one month or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I mean, I think our practice, I'll say, is that they don't start.
Okay.
Does that, can I say that holds true all the time? I, I'd give one record and say that's absolutely 100% of the truth.
I think for current students, if you know you have to have them at certain interval instead, it's like six weeks or something like that, but they're notified numerous times needing documentation. You've not had any problems. I think, I think we had the kind of conversation with nurses about this, probably about four or five months ago. And I think in the numbers of students not participating, vaccinations drastically decreased this year from last year.
Phil?
But as a clarification, the, the attorney has said this follows law and it says grounds for denial, which means they're not in, unless they're immunized. So
Yes, so they're not in.
Well, what if they're a current student and there's boosters or there's something that's required?
Yeah, then I think we need people with time.
Right.
I think the way it stands is fine unless, you know, look into grace period, which I wouldn't want a grace period at all. You don't stop.
Yeah.
Surrounding communities, if you came from Maine, showed up on week two, as soon as the nurse saw that they didn't have it, boom, gone immediately. So the policy as it states, you don't enter until you have proof that you have. I don't, I'm not for any kind of grace period at all because they'll tell you it's in the mail forever.
Um, so there's any questions?
Okay, I, I have a question. I have a couple of questions. Um, I know back when my kids were at the Baden Oss School, or my young, my oldest was at the Baden Oss, we were just starting out. There was a tremendous outbreak of chickenpox. Um, and all the kids had been vaccinated, um, and the state came in and tested and went to the kids' houses and, what was it, Smollett?
Mm-hmm.
Went to the kids' houses and tested them, um, to make sure that what they truly had was chickenpox because the kids had been vaccinated. Um, so that's a little bit different than this because the kids were vaccinated. But I know too, like the vaccination schedules, if you have a child come in and they don't, they're not vaccinated and they don't have any medical or religious reasons why they're not, and maybe they're missing five vaccines, you can't just go and get five vaccines at once. They all have to be, you know, separated, separated by time period because you don't want to attack the immune system. Um, so I'm a little bit leery, like Wayne said, about putting a, a date, like you have three months to do it because maybe if a child's missing two vaccines, they can do it in three months, but if somebody's missing six of them, it may take longer. Um, I just want to look that up here. So I guess at this point, do we table this until the whole information can be gathered or what was?
I, I, I think it's fine, I mean, a singular opinion, I think it's fine as written. I would make a motion that we approve section JHD.
Second.
Any discussion? I just have, one more question. So say we have somebody who transfers in from another country, right? And they're coming in in sixth grade and they get here in October. Are we really saying you're not starting school or are we saying you have five months to catch up? I mean, I just want to make sure that the policy is consistent with what we're doing when you consider that people could be coming from other states, other countries.
This, this policy states that when your vaccines are all set, we'll do business. I think that's what this policy says.
I think the policy exists. The policy exists with the protection of all the students.
Yeah, so is that what the school would do?
Yes.
Which I am fine with. I just want to make sure that that's what we would do.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Move the vote?
Questions, all in favor? Opposed?
So it doesn't pass on first read because I was opposed.
Right.
So that gives us time to further look into some of the questions and bring it back for second read.
Excuse me, I missed all that.
So it doesn't pass on first read because I was opposed to it, which actually gives us time to come back for a second read with additional information.
And that additional information is coming from the nurse?
So when I was speaking, I was speaking about students already enrolled, currently enrolled. This speaks about students who are new to our district.
What, what information are we looking for then?
Well, I also think that the state of Massachusetts is, is at a state level, starting to look at some of this, um, at the State House level. So I even, maybe that's something that we need to consider.
We could, we could look at surrounding policies.
Yeah.
Well, just, just to remind you that this is Duxbury's and our school committee lawyer shares with Newbury Court and that this is Newbury Court's language and it's been approved by our attorney.
Yeah, it's just like in the law, it says many school districts allow students on a catch-up schedule to attend classes. So I think that's kind of the question, like do we need a catch-up schedule? You know, are, are we a little bit out of date by not having
So there, you know, I mean, your point, your point is well-taken in the sense that we could essentially have a kid come from rural Maine.
Child, family just adopted.
Or, or out of the country or, or it's a foster child for which actually the policies and laws are in conflict with this, right? And, and the point of it is that that child could be out of school for a month, month and a half before they're actually caught up. So may, maybe there is the possibility that, that we allow for a 30 to 60-day grace period at the discretion of the superintendent with consultation with the nurse leader on, on circumstances and such, you know, yeah.
So our discussion will be around that or the value of saying, no, you can't come to school until you have done this, this and this.
Right, because we're not medical experts, so I'd be, if we look at that situation where a child is adopted, comes in and living with a family here and there is, or even if there's none, we have these conversations, if I had discretion to work with public health and speak with the nurses, well, what's the impact?
What if there's an outbreak within the 30 to 60 days?
So, right, so what's the, what's
We've already got polio in California now.
Right, so what's the most, what's the most likely to have happened, what's the most least likely to happen?
From Mexico.
Uh, and is that an appropriate approach to take with the student once they get the more serious vaccinations taken care of? Again, they still do have the option to say it's a medical reason or there's a religious reason.
So this is the first reading for us?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, so the next policy is JI, student rights and responsibilities. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? The next policy is JIV, student involvement in decision-making. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Next policy is JICB, which is student conduct on school buses. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Are we all in favor over here?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The next item, I'm sorry, the next policy is JICH, alcohol, tobacco and drug use by students prohibited. I know Joanna, any other questions on that?
Yeah, my question on this one regard, is regarding whether or not we ever decide to bring back any type of foreign trip and whether we need language in here that specifically says even if you are in another country where such behavior is legal, it still is against school policy to do this. Um, just because I know that we've kind of run into trouble with that before. You know, we talked about field trips, but I feel like a foreign trip is, I know a different
You could say something to the effect, this policy is in effect for all field trips, foreign and domestic and foreign.
Right.
That are endorsed by the school districts.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to amend this to the effect that this policy shall be in effect for all student-sponsored field trips, domestic and foreign?
Regardless of
What, the country, the laws of the country?
The, the age of, uh
Yeah.
Trying to sound technical with
Well, and we can always bring it back.
You send kids who've got a kind of a
Um, so the other thing that I would like a little bit stronger in this is the vaping products. Like there's a few mentions of it, but I don't think it's as strong with the vaping, um, like any student who is found on campus with a vaping product. Like, like I think because that is so pervasive right now, um, that I'd like
Vaping paraphernalia.
Yeah, any kind of vaping paraphernalia or whatever. I mean, senior celebration, there were students who tried to get away with it, like
Mr. Hodges, you, are you making notes on this?
I am taking notes and I would, I would move that we bring this up Monday and put the finishing touches on this piece of language.
But could you specifically include the word paraphernalia?
I have vaping paraphernalia written.
Hodges, even vaping any par- like for all of them? Could be drug paraphernalia, alcohol paraphernalia, tobacco paraphernalia.
I got it this time tonight. Any, motion to table? Motion to table? Second.
Second.
All in favor? The next item is JIE, pregnant students. Um, motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor? Um, the next policy is JJ, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion, Chris?
So the very last sentence of the first paragraph, um, states that the law does not prohibit school committees from allowing use of a school premises by independent groups with restrictive membership. So I have a problem with that because that would mean that somebody who is not, doesn't allow gay people or whatever.
Satanical.
Yes, whatever. That, that we would not prohibit that group from using our facility. So that's how I read it and I don't know if that's the intent.
In my interpretation, we have been pretty consistent with people who are using the facility is in the interest of the students and the community, protective community. So if you had, for example, a, um, a supremacist group decided that they wanted to hold a meeting here, um, we would deny that based on it's not in the interest of the students. It doesn't, it does not, um, further the advancements of the students' education for the same reasons we would, um
But our policy would not be what would keep us from
So
Allowing that use.
Not on this one. And I don't know if there is one about facilities.
So I guess, I guess I have a problem with saying that
Just randomly having 601, 603 CMR?
Well, or, or, yeah, saying that if we had a problem with a group, this policy would not preclude us from renting out or use, letting them use our facilities. I would like it to say that we will not let people such as that use our facilities.
Do you want to move down the description particip- uh, restrict students on the partition, participation on the basis of reading? Do you want that set of, um, labels to be used on the last sentence?
So, so are we not, are you reading this as the school committee hat, does have the ability to restrict use? That's the way I, I read that.
No, well, how I read it is it says the law does not prohibit the school committees from allowing use of school premises by, so that means
You can.
You can use them.
So that we
I don't want us to have that option.
The, the problem with that is, membership in the West Newbury League of Women Voters, okay, is a restricted membership to women. I, I imagine, I don't, I don't, I don't have a charter in front of me.
Actually, actually, the person who won that, that scholarship last week was a male student.
True, but a membership
I don't, I don't know that.
In the League of Women Voters, now, as an example, for instance.
For some gender-specific organization.
Correct. And, and if you were to write the policy that way, then they couldn't use our facilities.
Right. So then why does it need to be there? Why does that sentence need to be there? Because to me, that's saying
It's almost an open invite.
Yes. Exactly. Or someone saying, well, you have to let us use it because that's what it says right there.
It just says it does not prohibit.
Yeah, I think it still says we can prohibit. The school committee can prohibit.
But the law does not force you to prohibit.
So do we need that sentence?
There's, there's nine of us that can vote on that.
Yeah. And the other thing is it says here, uh, you know, the type of organization, the feeling you're talking about is one that most of us would not agree that we would want to use the grounds. And it says which restricts students' participation on the basis of race, color, et cetera. Everything in there would appeal, would almost be a blanket statement for the type of group that one would find objectionable.
And I'll be voting no with the KKK wants to come in and use our basketball court. John, I'm just putting that out there.
Sure.
Well, we don't, we don't vote on those.
So again, it's our, our process, we have not typically, unless there's something controversial, I can't imagine
Well, so I'll give an example, West Newbury years ago, it was the Boy Scouts. When the Boy Scouts were kind of having some issues with not allowing gay students to be part of the Boy Scouts. So West Newbury decided they might not let the local Boy Scout troops use the facilities. And I don't, I honestly don't remember how it went, but, but that's, that's a very, that's an example.
Yeah, so I think at that point, you know, we would follow our pattern, what we typically, what I would typically do for who used the facility. Um, but I think if there was an issue that was raised at school committee meeting, at that point you could decide, we're not going to allow the Boy Scouts because of this, because of their approach.
But I still have a problem with
You just want to take it?
Yes.
I don't care if we take it. Does anybody care if they take it out?
Because I think the rest of it down below goes along with
So just remove the sentence.
Remove
Do we need the sentence?
And not just, yes.
And I think that clears that piece up.
So I'll make a motion to approve the policy amended. Which is removing the last sentence in the first paragraph.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, any, any other discussion? Okay, so all in favor of amending policy JJ, co-curricular and extracurricular activities to remove the last sentence in the first paragraph? All in favor? All in favor? All in favor? Now closed. So where it was first reading of the first
Back to the second.
Second, right? Okay. Okay, so the next policy is JJIV and dysphalistic athletics. Make motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And the last policy is JJIC, which is student participation in athletics. Motion to approve?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Cast as well. Okay, so we got two amendments, or actually one amendment, uh, two to table and two up to win for a second read. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's evaluation. Do you want to talk on that?
Um, yep. Um, so thank you everybody for getting your, um, evaluation rubrics to us. Um, I did a overall rating based upon the individual criteria, um, and then based on that kind of came up with how many not approved or needs improvement, proficient, exemplary. Um, and then based on that, it was very clear that most everybody in each indicator, um, believed that Dr. Bartholomew has been doing a very proficient job, which is as expected. And, um, there were two areas in particular that, um, there was exceeding expectations. One had to do with, um, I don't have it with me right here, but paraphrasing, you're, you're a good ethical person, so. a good ethical person, so, and the second one had to do with community involvement. And I think all of us here rated you very high in that area, specifically because of the building project and all of the work that you did with the outreach and the gathering information, working with groups, trying to hit all different things. So in general, our overall evaluation, we determined that Dr. Bartholomew met professional practice goals, student learning goals, and district improvement goals. Overall, for each of the four standards, you came out as proficient with those two, and overall summative performance is proficient, and I just added a little narrative that talked about, one of the areas that you were, you excelled at was that part of the building project outreach and working with the communities. And I think even more than just the building project, I think just in general, that's what we all felt, so. Great work.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Do we have to...
Don't we need to vote on this?
Yes.
Yep.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing any, all in favor? Okay, so the next item on the agenda is public comment, and there's nobody here. Um, so I would like to get a vote to enter into executive session to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of property if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiation position of the public party. I think we need to vote, roll calls.
Yes.
Okay, Wayne? Dick?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Lisa? Yes, Chris?
Yes.
Emily?
Yes.
And we are returning?
We are.
We are not returning.